All right, Eva, are we about ready to get started?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Of course. Have the record reflect. All right, let's go ahead and call study session order. First item on the agenda is DR 22-129, District at Cooley Station. Keith.
Chair Simon, members of the Commission, good evening. So my first project tonight on the study session, as you stated, is District at Cooley Station. See if I can get the clicker to work here. Okay. Okay, so District at Cooley Station. And as you guys know, we recently brought this before you for a zoning change and a general plan amendment. So I'm sure you're pretty familiar with where this is located, but for those who are not, it's located at the northwest corner of Wrecker and Williams Field Road, highlighted on the screen in front of you, in the Village Center area of Cooley Station, across the street from our newly constructed Verde at Cooley Station development. So here's a little bit of a Cooley Station context map to show you where the site is in relationship to the rest of Cooley Station. And as you can see, it's at the heart, right there, in the Village Center. That's kind of the Village Center core, is what we call it. As far as the request tonight is for a design review approval to establish, well, this is just the study session for it, but the overall request is for design review to establish a commercial and residential master site plan on 12.24 acres, and also to eventually approve the design on 2.7 acres of the site, which is the multifamily portion. Actually, you know what? I think I messed up that acreage. I think it's more like 11 or 10 something. I apologize. So as far as the site plan is concerned, it's 12, net acreage is 12.24. They're proposing 612 units and two four-story building clusters, and you can see those on the site plan, one with frontage along Verde Drive and Williams Field, and the second one with frontage along Haskell Street. The site will be phased. You have Phase 1 is the first building there along Williams Field, and Phase 2 building is along Haskell and Wrecker. And then there will be a future retail phase. We don't know when that's going to be constructed, sometime, obviously, in the near future. And that retail building will contain about 26,000 square feet of freestanding commercial space, as of right now, with the second-story office/residential component. Each one of those Phase 1 and 2 buildings, the residential buildings, will have about 6,500 square feet or so of commercial space or non-residential space, consisting of, and this will be on the ground floor in each of those buildings, and you can see how that commercial space is located along Williams Field Road and along Wrecker Road. Hopefully, you can see that on your plan. And it consists of some office space and some kind of co-working space a little bit, and kind of a little mini grocery store. There's a concept called WeWalk. It's kind of a grocery store-ish type use. In future presentations, I'm sure the applicant will explain more about that, exactly what that is. But overall, about 13 and 1/2 thousand square feet of commercial, and split up between those two buildings on the ground floor. So there's also interior clubhouse and amenity areas for the residential buildings, and you can see those in the middle of the building clusters. They contain swimming pool, there's two swimming pools and some other lawn area spaces and gathering spaces in between all these buildings as well, other types of amenities that you've probably seen a little bit more detail in your packet. Lastly, on the site is the on-street parking. They have on-street parking off of each one of the roadway frontages. I think there's close to about 70 on-street parking spaces. Some of them are existing along Wrecker and Williams Field Road, and the new ones will be on Haskell and Verde Drive. And then, obviously, there's surface parking and the parking lot for the future commercial or retail phase. And then there's a garage for each one of those residential buildings, where there are about five and 1/2 stories of garage space, and that's where the residents will be parking. They will enter in off of the entrances off of Wrecker Road and Williams Field Road for the one parking garage for Building 2, which is Phase 2 building. And then the Phase 1 building has an entrance off of Verde Drive, and the residents will park in their space, and they will enter the residential portion of their building through the parking garage, kind of like you would see in like a hotel or a commercial type of environment. So that is the site plan. The landscape plan, this is our beautiful color picture here, 12.3% onsite landscaping, and a majority of the landscaping is along the street frontages. We have a lot of pavers and more of an urban feel and style, streetscape-type design, pedestrian-friendly design along the street frontages, especially along Williams Field. And then, of course, the little paseo in the middle has a bunch of landscaping and a concrete trail, and then there's some landscaping in the parking lot for the future retail phase. So the building elevations. So as far as our requested input, this is the main reason I wanted to bring this case to study session for you tonight. So during first review, and again during second review, staff has expressed concerns about the general design of the proposed residential buildings. And I'm going to flip through these slides in a minute and show you some other information and pictures and things. But staff is suggesting, after doing the reviews, that buildings, these residential buildings, be redesigned to further comply with typical neo-traditional design principles that have already been established in the Village Center portion of Cooley Station, and most notably across the street at the Verde at Cooley Station commercial development. And I'll show you that in a second. The proposed design that they're proposing, with the exception of Cooley Station red brick, is very similar to modern designs approved in other developments throughout the town, and doesn't comply with the town's unique vision for Cooley Station and for the architectural style that already exists in the area in the Village Center core. In addition, the proposed design should differ from some of the residential buildings to the south that you see at the Verde at Cooley Station development. And so I'll show you those buildings. And they should differ from those buildings because this is at the hard corner of Williams Field and Wrecker, where it's a lot more visible than a lot of these other buildings are. So we feel that that corner and these buildings should set a different standard. So I'm going to show, so these are the basic 2D elevations that I wanted to show you. But this next slide, you'll see the renderings. So obviously, this makes them look a lot better. So as further shown in this perspective drawing, which is the view from the Williams Field Road entrance, you can really see that the design of the buildings are quite different than what is found in the Village Center area, and I'll show you that in a second, as they appear to have very different design elements when it comes to things such as horizontal movement in the wall planes, vertical roofline movement and cornices, smaller tower elements, patio, their patio designs are different, the stylistic material types and ornate detailing are also not the same as the other buildings, or at least related. This general design, with the exception of the red brick, is very similar, like I said, to modern designs that we see on every, that could be put on almost any other corner in the town. And we feel that it is not unique enough for the Village Center area of Cooley Station. So this is the rendering on Wrecker Road, very similar to the one on Williams Field, basically identical. So here are some previously approved buildings that are currently constructed of neo-traditional design in the Verde at Cooley Station development to the south. So this has caused us to make these comments, and these buildings fit the vision that we are going for and fits that neo-traditional design element on these buildings that we would like to see more of at the District at Cooley Station. Starting first with what is existing in the Village Center, you can see how these buildings set the tone for the design that we are trying to establish at this intersection. I want to call your attention to the larger building in the top right, which is a three-story office building, which will be right along Williams Field Road. And it's set back about 18 to 19 feet from the street, and it's right across the street from the building of District at Cooley Station that's along Williams Field Road. So you can clearly see that what they've designed is not, that we would want the proposed buildings to complement more of this design and style. And even though they're a different use type, we still think it needs to better relate. And you can see all these other buildings, even though they're one-story and they're commercial, you can see the design tone that has been set. You don't see a lot of these materials at the District at Cooley Station buildings and the variety in the design. So here's some other buildings that were previously approved at Verde at Cooley Station. You can see the neo-traditional design flair on these buildings, the flat roofing, the massing is different, the metal awnings and canopies, and I'll show you some more here in just a second. So here's some of the apartment buildings that are located in Verde at Cooley Station, kind of to the south, that I kind of alluded to earlier. So you can see, even these buildings follow the form and the massing and the general design of what we're looking for in that neo-traditional design in Cooley Station. The top right building has not been approved yet, but it's something, it's going to be on that south side of Williams Field Road, also a little bit further to the west, at a hotel that's going to be, we're reviewing it now, it'll be coming to you in the near future. And the other ones are apartment buildings. The bottom right-hand corner is the Springs at Cooley Station, which is built and constructed. And then the other two photos on the left are Alta at Cooley Station, which is under construction now and, I think, almost completed. So you can see what the kind of look and feel we're going for. So lastly, this slide shows buildings that are not in Cooley Station, but still further demonstrate or capture this vision of what neo-traditional architecture is, and that the vision that we're going for. As evidenced by all the pictures that I have shown you inside of Cooley Station and outside of Cooley Station, neo-traditional architecture is a contemporary style that borrows from the past. Neo-traditional buildings are constructed using modern materials like vinyl, brick, wood paneling, stucco, some metal material for awnings and things, but the building design is inspired by historic styles. Some of the design elements that you might see and that we would ask the applicant to further consider on their buildings include long stretches of flat roofing, which you can see on these buildings, with decorative cornices, some gable roofing, as you can see at Epicenter, that's in the town of Gilbert at Higley and Ray, longer/wider wallplane masses. And you can see that on these buildings, how the wallplane masses, before there's a horizontal movement change, there's a long mass of that same wallplane, whereas theirs is just, there's too much movement. And then also things like cupolas, as you can see in Epicenter, and weatherveins and awnings that are metal and things like that, and other types of materials like that, and some faux mock shutters, ornamental brackets, ornamental railings, some other, you know, different window styles, like Palladian windows, arched windows, and Victorian light fixtures and things like that, just to name a few features that we think, that we hope the applicant would consider adding to their buildings to make them more along the lines of a neo-traditional design that you can see is already exists in the Cooley Station area that is under construction, that has been constructed or is proposed in the future. And you'll see some other apartment buildings coming down the line here in the very near future that are along these lines as well. So with that, here's the color materials board. Really, the only materials they have on their buildings are brick and stucco with a little bit of stone veneer. And then the paint colors are pretty much, pretty standard. So that's my presentation. That's the thing I really wanted to get your input on the most is the proposed residential elevation design. The site design, we've gone through this site design many, many times already, and you guys have seen it, where we support this development, we just have some concerns with these elevations that we would like your input on. And I will be quiet now and let you guys ask questions if you have any for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Keith. I think I'd like to start with questions or comments for Keith. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Keith. I drove by the Epicenter today, and then I drove down Williams Field, and I tried to get a sense of Cooley Station with this sort of a concept. I think the Epicenter has a very specific signature to it in terms of the way the buildings are articulated, the move in and out. The so-called neo-traditional, I consider sort of a flat treatment of the buildings. I was trying to see, under this design, driving down, does Cooley Station really have a unique signature that really stands out from other areas? I'm trying to see it as an area of character, but I'm not sure if I agree with you that the so-called neo-traditional creates such a unique character. Now, obviously, I was looking at your pictures and stuff. If that is a consistent theme, that all the structures along Williams Field have that same feel, especially when you pass the monument that says Cooley Station, all in brick, you know, near the shopping center, and you move to the west, I still see something that needs a little more excitement than this. Now, excitement is kind of a very, very, not a very clear definition, but some of these structures you noted from the other structures, to me, seem to be something from a different era, especially the sort of the flat treatment and whatnot. So I'm not so much in agreement that so-called neo-traditional is really a design palette that really makes Cooley Station unique, as opposed to some of the other palates we had, like Epicenter. So I'm just throwing that out after driving by both of these and trying to get in my mind a sense of what is, what makes Cooley Station Cooley Station? What is the character of that that people want to go to, live at, you know, entertain at? And I don't know about other, you know, kinds of things that would attract Cooley Station, but I still sense something was missing from the so-called neoclassical palette for Cooley Station. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Anderson.
I'm going to jump on that bandwagon and agree. If you could go back to the slide of the examples of the multifamily, the commercial, I mean, you pointed out, it's a different use group. It's that type of architecture you really can't apply to residential in a good way, where it makes sense. From the images, the examples that you're using here, I feel that what's being presented at District at Cooley Station fits in with this type of architecture, in terms of the massing, the colors. Epicenter, I think, I think this project is actually better designed than Epicenter. I mean, looking at the images, I remember when this came before us, I mean, they presented a lot of great 3D illustrations that really sold the product, but when you drive through there now, it doesn't have that grandness to it. It's, you know, it's, I think a lot of it is flat, not very exciting, other than maybe that main portion with the big Epicenter sign on top of it. But the other examples that you have, in particular, this, the last slide you had, I feel that this product fits in with that. I agree with the comment on the rooflines and the cornices. I think they need to do a little bit, something different there to articulate a little bit more, so it's just not a flat, square line that's up there. But in terms of materials, colors, massing, the ins and outs of the product, I feel this would fit in fairly well with this area. You know, maybe add a third material of some sort of like hardy board or something like that, maybe that would help to achieve kind of closer to what you're looking for, but, I mean, I think this product is, well, you know, pretty well-designed and fits in with the area. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Chair. When I looked at this, to me, it's a lot of the same. It's a lot of apartments, it's a lot of the same architecture, the colors aren't that different. So I think, you know, incorporating the neo-traditional into it gives some opportunities to create something a little different for the clusters of buildings, so that they can introduce some of those additional elements. I think Cooley Station is trying to be something, and it, you know, Epicenter's been built first and is kind of has some of those elements. I agree with Commissioner Anderson that there are some flat elements on Epicenter that aren't my favorite. There's really cool things and some things that are kind of like, yeah. But as far as this goes, I think it could be, I think that the additional elements could simplify it a little bit. I do like that there's a lot happening, but I think that some additional elements could be incorporated to break it up and create some, something that doesn't look like a lot of the same as you're driving down the road. So it also picks up a lot of the forms of what you see further down the road in Cooley Station, and if this area is supposed to be a little different, I think it should be. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Fay.
Thank you, Keith. I'm going to go a little bit of a different direction and some other stuff. I found the landscape, landscape percentages are something I'm not very inclined to compromise on, and I found the landscape percentages kind of confusing in here. They were, in one place, were for 5%, was, I think, what on your cover letter said required, and wasn't really clear that they were providing 5%, but then on the site plan, it said they were providing 31%. I found another place that was 12%. I did kind of a rough calculation and found it around 12 and 1/2%, which I think is probably, I mean, overall, I think it's kind of sparse, but probably meets the standard, but I found it confusing the way it was allocated throughout the, so when the main applicant comes in, I'd probably prefer a little more clarity there. And also on the cross-sections, the arterial roadway cross-sections, I noticed that there's no 18-inch curb and gutter, and I'm not completely, they're there. And I'm not completely clear on, on one side, it actually shows it, but it doesn't account for it, and the one side, it doesn't even actually look like it has it, which the reason you have a Portland cement curb and gutter is because oils, oils are good for the asphalt, but they pond there, and then they'll eat away at your asphalt. And you've already got slightly substandard travel lanes, so I'm not sure if we're kind of doing some, and everyone has to kind of manipulate the geometry once in a while to get all the pieces to fit. But I'm a little concerned about what else is going to get compromised if you had to kind of scoot around that. It could all be there, and it's just not really clearly reflected in my mind, or it could be that we're, we're having to kind of jam the pieces in and shorten this by two inches to make this shorten by two inches so that this fits over here, and we've all done that a bazillion times, if you're experienced enough to be sitting up here. But then the question to me becomes, well, what got squeezed out, or what are we kind of glossing over? So I'd like to see that reflected in where all the pieces are, okay? That's all.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll just point out that I'm in some agreement on the layouts. I think that at that corner, when you show the corner of it, it makes the appearance that it's very different, because you see those people hanging out in the top area, they're just enjoying life, looking out. But then, when you get down, you end up in a monotonous continuation of the same thing from what I can see. And not to say that it's not, it's not the same thing, but it is something that is very repetitive in comparison to what we're talking about, like if we're comparing it to the Epicenter, where there's a building of a completely different color. And so I'm not completely against it, I'm just saying, if there are ways to make that monotony less monotonizing, I would be for it. But other than that, I like the project.
All right. I think that's everybody. Commissioner Blazer, you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say, I agree with everything that's been said. I don't, I don't think I have any, anything more to offer.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Sorry, I just have a quick question to ask. So I was looking at the site plan, I see some refuge enclosures over by the shops. I'm assuming those are for the shops. How's the refuges being treated for the multifamily?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Anderson, so I think I have the floor plans of the garages. I believe there's some refuse, compactors in the, yes, thank you, Sean. There's some compactors in the garage. I thought I had the, I thought I had the floor plans for the garages.
Yeah, I see them in here, I'm just, I'm not finding.
I didn't, you know, I just put the floor plans of the first floor of the buildings. So in the floor plan, the first floor area of each parking garage, there will be, tucked in one of the corners, will be some trash compactors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a recycle area as well in that?
That I don't know the answer to.
Do we require recycle, or is it encouraged?
I think it's encouraged.
It is? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, we do have recycling.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Keith, I'd just echo what else has been set up here. I'm not too opposed to where it's at today. I do feel like there is some monotony, once you start looking at the elevation plan, the repetitiveness, you know, when it's lined out straight, I feel like it really kind of does it a disservice. But the renderings, I'm okay with, you know, maybe a little bit on the roofline. Otherwise, I don't know that I have any issue with this at all. I think that it will look fine in that area, so. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is DR 2317, the Arby's, and Samantha, you are up.
Thank you, Commission. This is DR 272317, Arby's. I'm Samantha Novotny, Planner 1. This is a study session item. Tonight, the applicant, just to summarize, the applicant's request is for a design review for a limited-service restaurant, which the proposed user is an Arby's, and the design review also includes a future pad. And the design review also includes a future pad. The Arby's includes a drive-through and is about 2,000, just 2,500 square feet of a building's square footage. The request tonight also includes an ask for construction documents at risk. So we'll be going over that. Here's a slide of requested input, so just keep this in mind as I go through my presentation. I'm looking for feedback on architecture and cohesion with the existing buildings and recently approved buildings. You may recall I brought forth a salad-and-go and shops A pad to the north. So you'll see that again on the elevation slide. General site layout of the current phase, which again is that Arby's and the future phase. Specific feedback on angled parking and trash, the trash enclosure location, and then any general feedback you have in advance of that CDs-at-risk request. Here is an aerial map showing the parcel as it, as it exists today. Tremaine Road is to the south, Power Road to the east, and City of Mesa to the east. And I have some labels there with the neighboring uses. It's about 1.8 acres and the Arby's is looking to develop a portion of that at 1.06. So they plan on splitting the lot and having that future pad to the east. It's zoned general commercial and is part of the Power Ranch PAD development plan. So staff has issued first review comments and I've listed the major ones here. One, again, is to move the trash enclosure out of the landscape setback. Code does not allow for the trash enclosure in that location. So we, we did have a conversation before this meeting and they are aware of these major comments. So I just wanted to bring it forth to you as you don't get to see the comments, all the comments that staff issues. They also plan on changing the parking to angled parking, so keep that in mind. This site will change and will be tweaked. Staff will be going through more reviews to include these major comments and any of the feedback you have tonight. In this slide, I show a chart of some of the development standards. And in, during first review, the site does comply with setbacks, parking standards. Those are some of our major standards. But again, they, they do plan on changing the parking. We want to make sure they still meet the parking counts and that the site circulates in a good manner. One thing staff has not had a chance to review yet is the landscape plan. And you'll see that in the third row from the bottom. It says landscaping percentage TBD. We haven't had a chance to do a comprehensive review, so that's forthcoming in the next review. And then I also want to note that in, oops, and that future pad, they will be developing on their own in the future. So they'll be coming forward with their own design review. That's not included in this review. It's conceptual at this point, just to show that there is still room after the lot split for development to occur. Elevations, this is their, one of their prototypes. The, it says front elevation, that should say south, and the side elevation is west. And this is one of the things that I was requesting feedback on because staff just feels that it can better relate to the other buildings in the center. And I pulled some images from the existing buildings. And as you can see, there's a wide range of colors and styles. So we just feel like Arby's can stick to their corporate color, corporate identity while still complementing the rest of the buildings in the center. You know, we're looking for, for them to pull some colors and materials from other buildings just to show there is a little bit of cohesion rather than standing alone. So I did point out that they are requesting CDs-at-risk and with your approval, they can apply for CDs-at-risk after they resolve all of staff's comments and any of feedback you give them tonight. So it's not the case where they can, after this meeting, just go and apply for CDs-at-risk. They, they do still have to go through at least one more review to show that they have resolved all these major comments. And then it will come back to you for a formal decision, a future public hearing. And here is that requested input slide again. I, short and sweet, so I'll take questions.
All right. Thank you, Samantha. Anybody have questions or comments for Samantha? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. On the colored elevations, their main color on here is white and it's finished A1. And then when you go to the color board, it has a gray tone to it. So what's the color? Is it white or is it gray?
That's one of the comments we made on our elevations that we'll need to clarify. There, there's also that horizontal material that wasn't clear between the colors and materials board and the elevation. So I'll make note of what that color is. I can't confirm whether it's gray or white at this point.
Okay. And then on side elevation two, where the roof access ladder is, does town LDC allow that to be viewed? Does it have to be screened in any way?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson, could you repeat the question?
On side elevation two, on sheet A 2.22, where the roof access ladder is, it's external to the building, does the town LDC require that to be screened?
Yes, we do. That is one of our comments as well, to internalize it. And in a conversation with the applicant, they, they understood that that wasn't a problem to do.
Okay. And then in terms of the CDs-at-risk, I mean, it's, it's their risk to take. It's not ours. If they feel that the comments they're getting tonight, that they can address in CDs, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's their risk to take. That's why it's called at-risk. So those are my comments on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have comments? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I agree on the roof access ladder. That's something I noticed as well. As far as the color, it would be nice to see if, you know, depending on what that base color is, maybe that's the opportunity to tie into those other buildings. I think there should be some cue to the other buildings, but generally, I was okay with this design besides the roof access ladder.
So not that I'm a subject expert in color, however, we did just paint the interior of our house pure white, Sherwin-Williams, which it is a little bit of a gray, but it is white. So it's kind of off-white, but a gray, depending on the light that you're in. So I'm not sure if that does mix into or fit with what else is there. However, from a branding perspective, that, that may be something that can be addressed on a little bit darker tone to fit in with the rest of the buildings. But that's all I have. Otherwise, I'm fine with it. All right, anybody else have anything? Samantha, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number three, DR 22-48, Corbell Energy Storage. And Sal.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Sal DeSanto, Planner One. It's nice to formally present to you all tonight. The case that we'll be taking a look at is for a study session. It is for DR 22-48, Superstition Sesh, Corbell Energy Storage. The subject site outlined in blue here is located at the northwest corner of Ithaca Street and Commerce Avenue, which is located within the Tremaine Industrial Park. The Tremaine Industrial Park is located between the City of Chandler Residential to the west, the Eldorado Lakes Golf Community to the north and east, and a mix of industrial uses to the south. Taking a closer look at the Tremaine Industrial Park, we can see the subject site is roughly 3.05 acres and is immediately adjacent to General Industrial Zoning District and industrial uses on all four sides. The proposal consists of developing an energy storage facility, which would be classified as utilities facilities large scale by our Land Development Code and is permitted within the General Industrial Zoning District. The proposal includes the entirety of the approximately 3.05 acre site to develop a new substation and place roughly 100 outdoor-rated modular unoccupable battery containers or packs on the site. I would also like to clarify that the proposed battery packs have been classified as utility cabinets and as such are not subject to the zoning district development standards. Only accessory structures will follow the base zoning development standards. The intent of this project is to provide a new sustainable energy resourcing as well as assisting the existing Corbell SRP substation located to the east and storing energy during low-demand periods as well as delivering the energy back to the grid during those high demand periods. I would also like to add, the use has received all associated approvals from the Arizona Corporation Commission. When we take a look at the site plan, access to the site will be provided on the east side of the property of Ithaca Street and to the south side of the property off of Commerce Avenue. A gated internal access drive will connect both access points from Ithaca Street to Commerce Avenue, providing efficient vehicle circulation on the site. As previously mentioned, 100 battery containers or packs will be placed in organized rows to the north and south sides of the internal drive aisle. All battery packs on-site will be set upon drilled concrete piers approximately two feet above grade as the property is located within a floodplain. The southeast portion of the site is proposed to be a new substation with associated equipment that will directly assist the existing SRP substation just to the east. Three unoccupable conic storage containers or accessory structures will also be placed along the western border on the site, while one substation control enclosure will be located at the southeast portion of the site within the substation security gate enclosure. An eight-foot split-faced and smooth-faced masonry block wall will be utilized on all four sides of the site, and an eight-foot internal security fence will be utilized to enclose the proposed substation just to the southeast there. In regards to parking, parking will not be required on-site as the use will not be accessible to the general public. Battery cabinets and accessory structures are unoccupable. Access is only permitted for periodic maintenance and there is no primary structure on-site. Taking a look at the landscape plan, it proposes an assorted range of trees and shrubs situated along the eastern and southern property lines. Types of trees provided are mulga, desert museum palo verde, thornless mesquite, while some of the shrubs and accent plants include bluebells, red emu bush, brake light red yucca, new gold lantana, and heavenly cloud Texas ranger. All landscape materials will be evenly distributed along both site entrances and along the eastern and southern property lines. Landscaping will not be implemented beyond the access points as the entirety of the site will be within a gated yard and will not be accessible to the general public. As previously mentioned, there will be no primary structure on-site as the unoccupable battery cabinets are considered utility cabinets. The battery packs will be mounted upon drilled concrete piers approximately two feet above grade, and the packs themselves will be roughly seven feet totaling to approximately nine feet in overall height. Each battery pack row will contain a nine-foot medium voltage transformer placed at the center of each row, and all proposed utility cabinets are painted to be traffic white and silver gray. The proposed substation equipment and control enclosure located within the enclosed substation will be roughly 11 feet in height to the roof line and 13 feet in height to the tallest point, which is the antenna there. The substation control enclosure is also to be painted traffic white and silver gray to match battery and utility cabinets on the site. Three unoccupable accessory structures will also be placed on the western portion of the site. The storage containers were reviewed as accessory structures and are located within the building envelope and meet the LDC standards for the accessory structures. The accessory structures are to be eight and a half feet tall in height and 40 feet in length. And again, these accessory structures are to be painted traffic white and silver gray. The interior substation fencing will be located in the southeast portion of the site and is proposed to be chain link, eight feet in height, and to be colored caramel. Chain link fencing is permitted within the employment zoning districts when they are not visible from the street. The fence will be shielded from property screen walls as well as landscaping along those property lines. An eight-foot ornamental roll gate to be colored bronze is also implemented at both site access points along Ithaca and Commerce, and a third ornamental roll gate will be placed at the substation entrance. As I mentioned earlier, an eight-foot split-faced and smooth-faced masonry block wall will be utilized on all four sides of the property as a screening method, and the colors are proposed to be pueblo and light brown. The wall design and proposed colors are also consistent with what is seen from neighboring Tonight, staff is requesting general feedback regarding the project as the applicant is requesting CD submittal at risk. And that concludes the presentation, and I open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Johnson. Is an eight-foot wall a standard for a facility like this? Have there been any higher walls like 10 feet? Or is eight-foot just the standard that is applied?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Johnson, the eight-foot screen wall is the typical standard per our LDC and when industrial use is adjacent to street or other industrial uses.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Commissioner Faye.
Thank you for that. And there's something I'll get to that's good, but I, a question about the parking. We've got plenty of facilities that are not open to the public that, that still, it's, whether it's a public facility or not, and whether it's open to the public are two different things. So where do the maintenance people who go here park?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Faye, when maintenance is taking place on-site, it will only take place one to two times a year. So there isn't suspected to be, you know, quite a bit of maintenance on the site, but the, the plan is when trucks are on-site, they will just be parked along that interior drive aisle to access all the neighboring equipment.
And I don't think that the, particularly for ADA compliance, the fact that it's not open to the public isn't the standard. I think it's a, so private residents does not have to require, does not have to comply with ADA, but public facilities that, even ones that aren't open to the public, we've got plenty of facilities that are owned by the firehouses that aren't even open to the public at all, that still have to comply with ADA in terms of parking. So I'm, I'm not sure that, I mean, it could be. Yeah, they don't expect to be there more than once or twice a year, but I, yeah, I bet they will be. Regardless, I'd, I'd take a, take a, maybe a closer look at that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Faye.
Anybody else?
I'll just say that I think this is a really good place to put something of this nature in the midst of a lot of industrial uses and actually spiffing it up with a, you know, eight-foot wall is going to look like the Taj Mahal in that area. And this type of a use is something that in all likelihood, we're going to see more of for energy resiliency. So I think this is a good project and well done.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Sal, I've got nothing else to add to that, so appreciate the presentation.
Awesome, awesome. Much appreciated, guys.
All right, thanks. All right, next item on the agenda is item number four, and that is Z 23-05, Tracks at Cooley Station. Keith.
Chair Simon, members of the commission, hello again. Oh, I have the wrong case numbers on my screen. I apologize. That's for a different case. But anyways, it's still Tracks at Cooley Station. So Tracks at Cooley Station is, is also obviously located in Cooley Station as the name indicates, and it's kind of at the, at the west end of Cooley Station. And you can see how the site's highlighted in the, in the red and actually call this the home plate parcel, just, just so you know. On the south side of Williams Field Road, along the railroad tracks. So, and again, the Cooley Station context map, I'm going to show you that, this probably every, every Cooley Station project I bring to you, as you can see where it's located on that far west side. So the proposed request tonight is for a PAD amendment, requesting to amend the existing development plan that was approved in around 2006 or 2007 or so, and add new deviations to increase permitted building heights and reduce building and landscape setbacks on the site, which is about 20, a little over 25 acres. So the existing zoning, as you can see on this exhibit in front of you, is multifamily medium with, obviously with the, it's in the Cooley Station PAD. And that's not changing. All they're doing is adding some additional deviations to the original, to original ordinances for the height and landscape setbacks and so forth. And I'll, I'll show you those more in detail in a second. Here's the previously approved development plan. It's, it's hard to see. It's, it's a very old plan and it's, you zoom into it, you can't get any more clarity. It's, it was probably a scanned paper copy. So this is best, this is the best I have, but I just wanted to show you where the site is located. And it was originally approved for multifamily. And you can see the buildings, how they're arranged and where they're located, kind of a more traditional multifamily with some spine roads. But obviously, they're going to change that. but obviously they're going to change that. And they're changing it, proposing to change it to this plan that includes 568 apartment units on a little over 25 acres. There's a total of 10 residential buildings. One at five stories, which is building six in the top left-hand corner. That one's five stories with a wraparound product with a parking garage in the center. And then they have a five-story, five-four-story buildings, all those buildings, one, two, three, four, whatever numbers they are, up to five, are four-story apartment units. And then they have four carriage units on the eastern, along the eastern boundary that are, that have garages, of course, in the bottom, and then they have a story of residential above them. And the site is about a little over 22 dwelling units per acre. And there's two access points, one off of Williams Field Road is the main access, and then there's one off of Somerton Boulevard to the south. So just a little background concerning Somerton Boulevard to add on the site that you won't find in your information or your packet at this point is that the developer, who is the Frankel family, originally submitted a pre-app in 2021 to develop the site, but it was determined that in order to properly develop the land for multifamily, that Somerton Boulevard to the south needed to be extended along that southern property boundary along the railroad tracks all the way to Wade Drive, which is the street that heads out to Williams Field on the west side. And this was in order to establish the original vision of a looped road system in this area that was originally envisioned on the original master plan to better ensure higher level of vehicular circulation and relieve some of the pressure of vehicular traffic along Williams Field and Wrecker Roads. Prior to the submittal of this application that you're reviewing now and then staff's reviewing, the town negotiated a purchase of the needed right-of-way to build Somerton with the Cooley family through a development agreement which was finalized in December of 2022, and it was recorded earlier this year. So as part of that development agreement, town staff and the applicant agreed that a PAD amendment requesting the proposed deviations would be an appropriate zoning planning tool for allowing the additional building height and reduced building and landscape setbacks to balance the impact of purchasing Somerton Boulevard, which obviously decreased the size of the original site. So we felt that doing a PAD would limit the impacts of that. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about Somerton Boulevard and how it came to be, how it came to be extended all the way out to Wade, and then all the way out to Williams Field, which is a huge benefit to this project and to Cooley Station area in general. So here's this for-reference-only site plan. Please note that this is not going to be part of the BREE Zone package. It's just a reference-only type document, and you can see the site in more detail. You can see the amenity spaces. You can see where the parking spaces are proposed to be located. So I just wanted to show you that. So as far as the deviations are concerned, there's four deviations at this point. So the first deviation is for the minimum net land area per unit. This one's kind of a little odd. I usually don't see this in an ordinance, but the original ordinance had allowed 17,000 square foot at 25 dwelling units per acre for each unit. We have to re-crunch some of the math on that, and I think this deviation's probably going to be eliminated once we redo some of the math, and so we've got to check that one out, but for now, that's kind of what it is. But the other deviations that are more impactful are the maximum height for stories for the building. 56 feet and four stories is what's allowed per the vertical development overlay area, area four. And the applicant would like to go to 69 feet, five stories, which is permitted as a base, as a bonus height per the vertical development overlay district. You can actually go up to like 85 feet and six stories, I believe, with the approval of a PAD. So that's the only way you can get the bonus height that the applicant is requesting is through a PAD such as what is proposed before you tonight, and town staff is in support of that. And the other deviation that the applicant is requesting is along that eastern property boundary. As required per the original Cooley Station ordinance, 20 feet is required along the eastern property boundary, and the applicant's requesting to reduce it down to 10. And also the landscape setback, they're requesting also to reduce it down to 10 from 15 feet. And if you notice on the site plan, adjacent to those carriage units is where is the, along that eastern, where that eastern boundary is, and adjacent to those carriage units is a parking lot for the hotel that's going to be coming before you, Marriott Hotel in the very near future, Town Place Suites, and of course, parking for an apartment complex with some loft units and things. So there's really not a lot of impact to reducing the building setback along the eastern property boundary and the landscape setback from 20 and 15 feet down to 10 feet. So that concludes a major portion of my presentation. The applicant did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting in January of 2023, of course. No surrounding property owners attended, and there was a reporter there from the Sun-Times, and they just asked general questions. So we haven't, and we haven't since, we haven't heard anything from anybody else. So the requested input tonight is your thoughts on the proposed development plan and on the requested deviations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have concerning this proposed PAD amendment and the deviations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to ask Keith questions. Keith, we said that those road improvements needed to be made prior, and I may have missed this because I sometimes get ADD. Have they been done now?
Chair Simon, Vice Chair, no, they're not completed now. They're something that will be completed. I don't know what the timing for construction is. I'm sure the applicant has a better answer for that, but the development agreement, like I stated, was just approved earlier in January earlier this year, and I believe those roadway improvements will start their construction around the same, close to the same time as the apartment complex. Am I getting your question right?
That is correct. I was just trying to do the math in my head of, oh, we can't build this, but if we throw something underneath it and stack another four stories, then it's okay. So that's fine. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Blazer.
Thanks, Keith. Maybe I missed it, but along that east side where they're proposing shrinking the setbacks, is there a screen wall that will be built there?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Blazer, yeah, I believe we haven't gotten to that level of the review yet since this is just a zoning case. We'll find out more during the design review case if there's going to be a wall. I'm anticipating there will be some type of wall, but I'm not sure exactly what type, what materials, how tall, but I'm sure there will be some type of a wall.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems that if they're going to shrink setbacks, that would be the spot to do it.
Right. Yeah. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Fay, you good? All right. Commissioner Anderson.
Just jump on the deviations. I think they're pretty miniscule. I agree with you. I mean, especially on the east side, and it sounds like the building height. I mean, it's allowed per the overall PAD, right? You just have to go through this process. Yeah, so I don't see any issues, the deviations that they're requesting. They just seem pretty minimal to me. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
All right. I would agree. That's exactly what I was going to say is I feel like the deviations requested are very minimal on this. I think it makes sense tucked back in the corner that it is. I don't have a problem with it, so. Unless there's anything else. All right. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move into discussion of regular meeting agenda. We currently have on the consent agenda, we have DR 22-141, the Fairfield Inn at Marriott. We have DR 22-48, the Corbell, that's actually continued. So we've got the one item on the consent. Does anybody see a reason to pull that from consent? Nope. All right. And then on non-consent, we have item 11, GP 23-11, Gilbert Spectrum Building 3, the zoning of 2302 Gilbert Spectrum Building 3, number 12, and then number 13, DR 22-115, Val Vista, and Market Drive, drive-throughs. And then we've got item 14, Z22-17, Baseline Commercial APAD, and then item 15 and 16, which are both GP 23-12 and Z2304, The Ranch. Are any of those items able to move to consent this evening, or are we all keeping them all on non-consent? I think we're keeping them all on non-consent.
Chair, I'd be fine with 11, 12, and 14 all going to consent unless somebody has, if people have issues, of course.
All right. We've got.
I too would be okay with those.
11, 12, and 14. Is there any reason to keep those on non-consent, or I mean, on consent? On non-consent. I said it right the first time.
Unless somebody from the public comes. Is there any reason why you can't move 13, the DR case, over to non-consent? I mean, to consent?
13's fine with me. If I recall correctly, when it came before, there was quite a bit of comments from, but, so I, yeah, it's fine with me.
Chair, I have some comments on 13.
You have comments on 13, so keep that one off? All right. Anybody have any issues with 11, 12, or 14 moving to the consent agenda? Do we have any comments from community members, or do we have anything from staff that we need to hear on those?
Chair, not at this time unless somebody spills out a speaker request.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll move items 11, 12, and 14 to the consent agenda, keeping item 13, 15, and 16 on the non-consent. With that, we'll go ahead and close out the study session, and we'll be back, let's call it, at 6:10. We'll come back.
Yeah, I just ripped one. I was trying to keep it away from you, bro. Good job. This is like, this is like high school. It was hurting, and I was like, oh, good God. I knew I should have.
I knew I should have.
All right.
On the southern border, all other access to the site is taken through the proposed user to the east, which is the Fairfield that was approved just now on consent. And the site meets all the required parking for regular-sized spaces, and it's also chosen to utilize compact parking spaces for some of the spaces that are in excess of the required parking count. Those are found on Pad A facing the building, or in front of the building. The landscape for the site includes 26% landscaping, which exceeds the 15% requirement. Some of the proposed plans include evergreen elm, red push pistachio, red yucca, and lantana. All right, and the elevations, we'll start with Pad A. It's a single-story building 25 feet tall. It consists of stucco in various shades of brown, with a deep red color being used as the accent color. The building also utilizes stone veneer to highlight the column and corner features. And the roofline is mostly flat with varying heights and pitches over the entry points to the building. It's currently proposed as a Farmer Boyz, as you can see in the picture. So Pad B is a single-story building at 22 feet, nine inches tall. It doesn't currently have a user proposed. The building consists of stucco in various shades of gray that complements the user to the east, the hotel user. They've also included Nietzsche accent material on the tower column, as well as stone veneer along the bottom to complement the Pad A building. There's a large metal canopy that wraps around the eastern and southern elevations, and also the canopy over the pickup window in the drive-thru. All right, here is a more close-up picture of the colors and materials. The design guidelines for this area encourage the use of natural colors and materials, which you'll see found throughout here. All right, and with that, we recommend approval of DR 22115, Valvista and Market Two Drive-Thru, subject to conditions. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right, questions? Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. What I wanted to ask about, Kristin, was the southwest corner of Pad B. When you look at the landscape plan, I think is where you can see it best, if you're able to zoom in there. I'm trying to understand the drive-thru, how their drive-thru and their pickup window works. It looks like there's a, like some, maybe a sliding door that opens right there, but there's landscaping right there. It didn't seem like, I'm not quite sure how that functions as far as serving somebody in that drive-thru lane.
Okay, Chair Simon, Commissioner Davis. So for the drive-thru, the pickup window for the drive-thru is on the west portion. Hi, this is Brian.
Hi, I'm with Atlas Development, so...
So he can probably answer this question a little better.
Yeah, so basically, we're talking to a couple of coffee users, and it would be a double drive-thru on the north side that goes around into a single drive-thru, and then the window is on the, I think, on the west end there.
I see that, I'm just not seeing how it functions as far as any kind of, it looks pretty far from the car, and it looks like it's a door of some kind versus just a window, is what I'm trying to under...
Yeah, I think...
Just something to take a look at, make sure that you're working out those details.
Yeah.
I did, like, all the glass...
It doesn't pop out like a lot of the other drive-thrus do.
Right, right.
So...
It was different with the door also versus a window?
Yeah, I think, I think the idea was kind of like White Castle, which they have up in, they just have both, they have two drive-thru, both with doors where the, you can actually come out.
Okay.
Pass it to it, so we've been seeing that more and more, but...
Okay. And then I had one additional comment. On the north elevation, got that kind of gap that's happening on that very small short wall. It almost looks like it's an area for roof access ladder. Don't, I was, it looks like it should be connecting across there versus coming down. Right there, yeah. I didn't understand the purpose of that gap. If it's intended for some sort of access, which we don't want, seems like that should be closed up on that small wall.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I thought Grant was, or Architect, I thought was going to be here to explain that.
Okay.
We have left comments that they can't have the exterior roof ladders and drainage and...
The, there was the proposed user that was part of the prototype, I don't know. I don't think it's for...
Yeah, because we're, we're not sure who it's going to be, so...
Right.
But is that something that is an access right there, or is that just a design?
No, it wasn't intended, it was just part of the design. It wasn't intended to be an access ladder, no.
Can you state your name, I'm sorry?
I'm Grant, I represent the architecture firm that...
Okay, thank you.
...designed this.
I just feel like it's going to be a gap where you're going to see roof equipment and stuff. I don't know that it's really doing anything on such a small building, so I guess if the other board members agree, I could add a condition.
Add a condition to close that gap?
Yeah.
Do you rather see that just go straight across?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that's, that would be...
So I don't think you'll really see that, perceive that orange, because it's setting so far back. I don't think you're getting the effect that it shows here.
Right, I understand.
So, okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, I gotta jump onto this. So I'm looking at the elevations and the floor plan, that's the site plan, and there's a lot of inconsistencies happening here that just don't make sense, so I'm now seeing what you're looking at. So, the west elevation is, I'm looking at the site plan, it's the left side, and I'm seeing where that little sliding glass, that little slider is, which matches the west elevation. And it's right on that far corner of the building, and it's also at the corner of where the turning lane is. So how does that function? I now see what you're looking at. And then you look at the north elevations, where that little areas that she had concern about where there could be a ladder, you're showing two doors there on the site plan. There's only one door. Can you just stay on the elevations, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. And then, let's see, you got that big parking, that canopy that overhangs, and we don't see that on the site plan. It's just the placement of the building on the site plan with the turning of the turn lane, there's just, there's stuff happening that's not matching up with the elevations, and it's causing issues here. So, right now, this doesn't look to me that it was fully thought out.
I mean, I believe they're matching. If I could see the site plan one more time? It's hard to tell, but there are two doors here, it's, you know, the line thickness, it's a little hard to tell. And that overhang is also dashed here as a dotted line as part of the patio overhang.
So do I just have a old, bad site plan?
I'm not sure. I mean, it's shown on this one, it's just hard to tell.
All right, so the site plan I have is showing one door on that north side, and on the southwest corner of that building, there's a sliding door there, which matches the elevations, and it's right at where that turn lane happens.
Right, and the sliding doors intended, like a laundromat sliding door, where someone walks out the, you know, to drink or food or...
Okay, so, on the elevation, the west elevation, where that sliding door is, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that, yes.
Okay, so that's on the southwest corner of the, of the building, and when I compare that to the site plan, there's, there's gonna be a car parked right at the corner of the turn lane. So how, how does that function?
So, the employees open, like, they walk out for the doors and just handle it?
I think you're following what I'm getting at. You have a turn lane like this, and a building here, you have a door that's right on the corner here. Typically, the doors are on the flat portion, so the car can get parallel to the, to the building. So, you've got the car that's exiting off the site where they're picking up their coffee or whatever.
I mean, the car is underneath the canopy and straight. Then they, that's where the door is, and then they get their drink, and then they make the turn.
From the site plan I look at, the door is right at the turn. You're seeing the same thing, right?
Do you mean on the corner turn?
Yeah.
And landscaping in front of it.
I mean, on this, I, I'm a little confused as well. The doors, so, the doors on the corner here, they pick up their, and then they just come out and exit the properties for the, that access right there.
And it's square, so the, the door's face is west.
And, and the door's not exactly on the curb, because it's not, it's not a typical drive-thru window, it's a, you know, like a laundromat sliding doors where the employees walk out the, the food or drinks or whatever.
All right, first, from the site plan I have, that door is like right here at that corner. Typically, you see it in the midpoint of the building, so a car can get parallel flat to the building. The door that I'm seeing on the elevations in the site plan is happening right there.
Maybe we could go back to the building elevation and see that door on the west versus being on the corner?
So that, that's, that's the door we're talking about, right?
Yeah, and that's on the west side of the building.
Right.
Facing west.
Right, that, right where that, the turn lane is cornering, right here.
Turn, yeah, after you get, you stop there underneath the canopy, you get your drink, then you will turn out.
It's right at the turn.
Well, it's a couple of feet off the curb.
It's right at the turn. Like, I, I don't know why there's such confusion here. So, let, let's just keep this going. Let's get a stipulation for you guys that you need to work that out. It, it doesn't work. It doesn't function.
The door may have to shift.
But...
The door may have to shift.
Yeah. Instead of a shell building, you don't have a tenant for the space yet. Shift the door to the middle of the building, and you're fine. It doesn't work at that location right now.
Okay, we'll look at that. The only thing that does is less stacking from, from the window to...
All right, work it out with staff. I mean, it, it doesn't work. It, it's not functional.
You good?
I think so.
Anybody else have questions, comments? All right. At this point, we would go to the applicant. If you want to give a presentation on this, I don't know if it's necessary at this point, but if there's anything you'd like to give us in addition to what we've got, unless there's any other questions up here.
I mean, the only thing I'll say is we've tried to work closely with, with everybody to come up with this plan. So we've had multiple calls, multiple meetings, we've worked with the hotel as well to try to create something where we have the hotel. They're not using parking during the day, then we've got a lunch user who's using lunch, then we've got somebody who's using parking in the morning. So we really try to, I think we have a pretty good mix there. And we've just taken this building from a couple of the two that we're talking to, and they provided us with these, this building elevation is what they use it. I think they have, one of the groups has a number of locations. This is their exact footprint they provided us.
Is the reason for having the, and you mentioned this, so it's kind of a redundant question, but is, is part of the reasoning for this because of the stacking? Is there code that we need to allow for the stacking that needs to happen in order to, and that's why this door is so far down the building?
Chair Simon, the stacking is, it's three or four spaces. I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head which one. One of the users is three, the other one is four. But with the double stacking, the double drive-thru lanes, they, they meet the stacking, so the door could potentially shift. I just, we'll, we'll have to discuss that.
Okay.
If we're still talking about the door.
Yeah, I would, I would say, I mean, just kind of looking at the stacking, if you shift that door, you're going to lose one car length, in essence. I will call on my inner Commissioner Fay on this one. It'll probably wrap out onto that private drive, I'm guessing, if we get additional cars going, so it's, you're going to get rap. I don't, I don't, depending what you put here, I mean, if you put Dutch Bros, you're going to have problems all day long. So, don't talk to Dutch Bros, I guess.
Oh, we're, yeah.
I don't know, but, but, you know, just kind of depending. I'm just kind of looking at this, and I'm thinking, okay, if you shift, shift that down, like Commissioner Anderson's saying, you're going to lose basically a car length. So now, we still have the stacking that we need, in essence. I don't think there's going to be an issue there. So, I don't, I don't foresee a problem with it, but, all right. Unless there's any other comments or questions, unless you have anything else to add, we'll go ahead and close the public here. Oh, Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes. In the past, when we've had food users like this, it's been a single use. Now we have a double use, and we've discussed in the past the problem of traffic congestion, especially in the main hours of uses, where you have people going in and out. Now, once they're, they're off Valvista, that's probably not an issue, but when you're in a, you know, a major time, let's say towards the early evening, and you have both food users, people coming through and, you know, getting in the line or getting in the queue, you're expecting people, either reliever valve to be the adjacent property. So, I mean, have you looked at the problem of the highest hours of use, when you have two food users right next to each other, and people are lining up to try to get in, and in, whether they're, they're parking for, for the food already, but it seems to me you're going to have some congestion points when you have two food users right next to each other in a fairly tight, narrow property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, staff.
Sure, yeah, we've looked at that, and that's, the coffee user is in the morning, I mean, very little business at night at all. The other user is a hamburger restaurant, and their primary business is lunch. They do have some evening business, but it's not much. And the hotel during the middle of the day is not when they have people parked there either. People are parked there at night. So we really felt, we've worked closely with the hotel, and both, you know, with everybody else to feel like we've got a good plan, so that it's not going to be congested, especially at night.
All right, thank you. And I don't see that we have any public comment on this at this time. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this, and we'll bring it up to the dice for conversation. And I will open it up for conversation, if anybody would like to start, or a motion, if there is one.
Well, Chairman, I'll make the comment.
Vice Chair, yeah.
I think that what they've done here with having the different mixed uses, that do have different high-use times during the day, and next to a hotel, that's actually a lot of forward thinking, so I think that's great. And personally, I don't have a problem with the door. I think that there's possibly that somebody would be walking out and walking around like at a bikini bean, not that anybody wants to actually say that, because it might cause ruffling of feathers, but I believe that those doors exist right at the corner, and the, the servers wander around outside. But that's neither here nor there. I just wanted to point out there are uses where this type of a layout, albeit strange, does exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Davis.
Okay. I move to approve DR 22115, with the conditions included in the staff report, as well as a condition for them to close that gap on the, we find it here, north elevation, to match the wall plane that's already there, and finish it the same. As far as the door, they're going to have to take a look at the landscaping and make revisions as necessary to accommodate the door location. So look at the function of that door, and just understand that you're probably going to have some landscape, hardscape requirements that are going to have to be met. And that's it.
All right, so I have a motion to approve with stipulations. As noted, do I have a second?
Second emotion.
I've got a second by Commissioner Johnson. All those, excuse me. Please cast your vote. Almost. And the commis, it carries, motion carries, 7-0. So, and actually, I just want to make sure that we got those, the stipulations down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to GP 23-12, The Residents at the Ranch, as well as 16Z 23-04, Residents at the Ranch, and Veronica. Game time.
Chair.
You're up.
Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, Commissioner Blazer would like to recuse himself. Shall we take a vote to accept or deny his recusal? All right, Veronica.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Veronica Gonzalez, Principal Planner, here to present to you case GP 2312 and Z 2304, Residences at the Ranch. The subject site is approximately 39 acres, and it's located near the southwest corner of Power and Elliott Roads. The site is actually located within the larger 311 acres for the ranch that was acted upon by the Commission in October. This request is just for the 39 acres as shown on this aerial, though. Since the study session last month, the applicant has updated the rezoning request. The minor general plan amendment remains the same, though, which is to change the land use from industrial, general office, and general commercial to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre and general commercial. The updated rezoning request is now to rezone from light industrial, business park, general commercial, general commercial, to a multifamily medium, a mixed-use small, mixed-use large, and general commercial, all with a PAD overlay. The change being the addition of the mixed-use large zoning district and the PAD overlay. So I'm going to orient you here a little bit. North is to the right of the screen, that's Elliott Road, Power Road along the bottom, and then Warner Road on the left side here. This is our general plan exhibit here, showing you where the locations of those general plan land use categories as proposed by the applicant. And here we have our zoning exhibit. In this exhibit, you can see the location of the new mixed-use large zoning category that's now been introduced into the mix, and where it is located between the future general commercial and light industrial portions of the larger piece. The development plan is for 39 acres. Hopefully, you can see it, it's outlined in pink here, and we can kind of see how the two parts now fit together. As I had mentioned earlier, the larger employment industrial area was acted upon by this Commission back in October. This 39-acre portion that is currently under review is scheduled to go before the Town Council for consideration in June, along with the larger piece. A couple of items I'd like to bring to your attention. As shown here, as you saw on the zoning exhibit in the previous slide, the piece along Elliott Road now proposes the mixed-use large category, instead of the previously proposed multifamily medium, which presents a better transition between the general commercial and light industrial zoning categories there. I'd also like to note the internal circulation routes shown with the black and yellow dash lines. The black dash lines indicate the multifamily, commercial, restaurant, retail traffic. The yellow dash lines represents the industrial traffic. So all of the multifamily and commercial traffic will go out to Elliott Road, some to Power Road, and, and down to Warner Road. The yellow dash lines indicates the industrial truck traffic, which will use Power and Warner and Power Roads primarily for access. The rezoning request now includes a PAD or Planned Area Development Overlay Zone. The PAD overlay, overlay standards, as it applies to this project, includes a maximum height of 35 feet, two stories, and a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre within the multifamily medium portion. No drive-through facilities within the general commercial. The mixed-use small will have at least 15,000 square feet of ground-floor non-residential uses, and then the mixed-use large will have a maximum height of 45 feet, three stories, and a maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre. And then it'll also include some minimum design standards for future development. Overall, the maximum unit count would be about 750 units. Within the mixed-use large, the applicant has proposed a minimum of 15,000 square feet of non-residential uses, which is similar to what's proposed with the mixed-use small. However, staff believes the minimum LDC requirement of 20% of the floor area be dedicated to non-residential uses within the mixed-use large, and you'll see that reflected in the conditions of approval of the amended staff report. Site planning and building design will be reviewed under a separate design review application in the future, but the applicant has presented some exhibits to illustrate a design concept for the project, and the PAD will help to ensure future development complies, complies with this design theme. The area is identified within two areas within the general plan. One is the Power Road growth corridor. The general plan encourages mixed-use developments within growth areas of the town, where higher-density residential components of a mixed-use project are designed as an integral part of the development and create a distinctive living environment. And as we all know, this is within the Morrison Ranch characters, character area as well, where the land use policy of the Morrison Ranch character area encourages neighborhoods with a variety of uses and densities, as long as they integrate with the overall rural ranch character of Morrison Ranch. Staff does believe that the applicant's amended proposal is conducive to a unique living environment, and will provide a variety of land uses and housing products. This is the conceptual site plan, and it is strictly conceptual. It is for illustrative purposes only, it's not, and is not a part of the rezoning request that we're considering tonight. As I mentioned earlier, the site planning and the building design will occur in a future, in the future, under a separate design review case, but I wanted to show you what was envisioned for how this area might develop. And I've put into context the conceptual site plan with the overall area, again, to give you a feel for, this is a large site, taken as, as a whole of the 311 acres, to give you some context of the area. An in-person neighborhood meeting was held last week on April 25th. Approximately 54 residents were in attendance. There were some questions, concerns, and comments that related to items such as noise and truck traffic, the livability of multifamily next to industrial uses, the market for the multifamily development, the landscape buffer along the western boundary, and building heights. A couple of hours before this hearing, I did receive a phone call from a coffee shop owner on the east side of Power Road, so the Mesa side of Power Road, requesting a traffic signal be installed at their property. A traffic signal will be installed along Power Road, but not necessarily at this particular coffee shop's location. With the change from multifamily medium to mixed-use large along Elliott Road, staff does now recommend approval of the, of the minor general plan amendment, as well as approval of the rezoning request. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Veronica. Anybody have any questions, Veronica?
I have a procedural question.
Commissioner Fay.
So, the original, the light industrial, the bigger, the rest of the 300 acres, the more controversial piece, we voted on that back in about October-ish.
October.
It went to council, council fiddled around with it, deferred it, they took first action, and then deferred it again. Now, this is coming, when that other piece comes, did I hear you say the original approval in October is still going to stand even though this new piece is carved out of it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fay, the recommendation from, from this Commission will stay. It will, the case will move forward. We've got it scheduled right now for the June 20th Town Council hearing. That case was tabled at the February 21st Town Council hearing, so the site, the, that application, which is 271 acres now, will have to be re-advertized, reposted, new letters will have to be sent out, so it's almost as though it is redoing that part of the process.
But not redoing it with us, just redoing it there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fay, that's correct.
Questions, comments for Veronica at this point? Okay, Veronica, I'm going to save what I've got. I'd like to have the applicant come up and give their presentation at this time. Mr. Lake, I'm assuming you'd like to do that? And then we'll go to public comments and answer any questions there. So, Mr. Lake?
Thank you.
Thank you.
While that loads up, I'll, I'll just kind of get started here. I'm going to take you back about six months to my first exposure to this. I remember I came to Town Hall on a, for a morning meeting with staff, and I think a council member may have been there, or may have just been with staff, and I remember walking in for the morning meeting, and the eyes in that meeting of, of the council, or one of these council members and staff, were huge. the council, one of these council members and staff, were huge, very big. This is a November meeting. And I said, "What's going on?" They said, "Did you hear about last night's council meeting?" And I said, "No, I didn't hear about it." There were a thousand slips of people who wished to speak in opposition to this project, and it filled the chambers, it was overflowing, it was crazy. And I remember thinking to myself, "Boy, I'm glad I'm not on that project." But here we are, since that day, six months later. We were charged, we, well, first off, before I get into that, I want to thank staff. Veronica has been amazing, to put it very boldly and bluntly. She's been amazing. Ava and Kyle have also been very good to work with, so we've had a great time working with staff. But the neighbors have been exceptional, and I'd like to express a special appreciation to the neighbors and Stacy, who has been kind of leading the charge with us to work with the neighbors to try to put together a deal. So back in November, and I'll get into this, back in November, we were charged by the council to go lock ourselves in a room with the neighbors and come forward with the plan. And that's what Stacy did. He locked himself in a room with some of these neighbors, and they worked together to try to identify the issues of concerns that the neighbors had. And in identifying those things, make changes to the plan to address those issues. And over the many months, that was done. And that plan was presented somewhat to you in a study session, but was also presented to staff. That plan received a recommendation for a denial on last week, and then we locked ourselves in a room, so to speak, not literally, but we locked ourselves in a room with staff to try to come up with a plan to change that as well. And so that's how that plan changed from last week to this week, to now you have the mixed-use plan for a portion of the property, to where we are here today. And I think for the most part, we're in agreement with staff, and I'll go over the only concern that we have regarding to the project. So having said that, we appreciate everybody working together on this, to really come to a meeting where we're, the last time this was, the room was full, and there was tremendous opposition, but I think there's been a tremendous amount of work, largely thankful for the neighbors and Stacy putting that together and working together to try to come up with something that we can present to this body, as well as the town council going forward. And that's why we're here this evening, with very few people here. So kudos to the neighbors and Stacy on that. So let's get started. The project is called Ran, the Ranch. The name hasn't changed, but there has been quite a bit changed. And what has changed is largely contained within this 30 acres, not entirely, but largely contained within this 39 acres that were here before the planning commission this evening. And we're requesting that you recommend approval of this, so that we can move forward to council, so that this 39 acres can merge up like a puzzle with the larger, now 271-acre piece of the ranch. And between the two applications, the council can hear them both on the same night and vote on both of them together as this puzzle, and move this forward, or whatever the council so chooses to do. So that's why we're here with just the 39-acre project. Veronica did an excellent job of outlining what exactly we're doing, so I'm not going to read this slide, but she did a great job of explaining what we're requesting on this project, but the whole project will have a PAD overlay. So when Stacy and the neighbors first locked themselves in a room, they tried to identify both from public hearing minutes, notes, and meetings what the primary concerns were. The primary concern was the percentage of industrial, the amount of open space buffer on the west side. There was no really cool factor to any portion of this project, no destination area. They didn't want to see truck traffic going out onto Elliott Road, and they wanted to have some type of physical, vertical buffer to both the neighborhood to the west and also to the north on Elliott Road. And so that was the charge. And so let's talk through this. This was the original plan that many of you may remember. The amount of industrial was 93%, with 7% commercial, and very little buffering. This didn't work. The next plan, or old plan, that went to the council in November, that was the subject of the 1,000 speaker cards in opposition, was 80% industrial, 10% business park, and commercial. So a lot more industrial than the neighbors were willing to accept. This is the plan of, we think that the neighbors, while not entirely excited about it, they'd love to see less industrial, this is something that they were able to get their arms around. And that's the plan that we're bringing before you this evening, with 71% industrial and 12% commercial, and you can see how that's broken down. So let's talk about some of the specific things. On the west side, almost the entire length of that project, there is a large, open-space buffer that will be designed during the design review process, for what that's all going to look like. But we've put that into perspective. It's about 12 football fields long, because this is almost going to go from Warner down to Elliott, all the way to Elliott. So it's a big, long, open-space tract that acts as a distance buffer from the neighbors to the west. So that was one of the components the neighbors wanted to see. And here's kind of some views. We put together some renderings of what that would look like. You can see in the lower right-hand corner where those perspective or renderings would be looked at from the Morrison Ranch subdivision, and what that would look like. As you're looking across the open space into the two-story multifamily, that would be that first component on the west side of the development. The other big component that the neighbors wanted to see, in addition to the buffer, was a cool destination spot. They wanted something unique, something different, instead of just a big industrial project on 300 acres. And that took some effort to try to come up with a plan that would generate not only the density of people that you need, but also the amount of retail and restaurants and places that these people wanted to go visit. They wanted a place where they could walk out of their neighborhood, walk across that open space, and go sit down and have dinner with their partner, their children, their family, their friends, another couple. But they wanted this cool destination area. And so we tried to incorporate that into the plan through the use of both the commercial, the residential, and the mixed-use zoning districts. And so that's largely what we're seeing here tonight, is what is contained on that 39 acres, is that cool destination spot. And we've submitted quite a few renderings and elevations, and I'm sure you have in your packet of what that area will look like and what that concept will look like. I'll show you a few of them up on the screen here tonight. But you can kind of see in the lower right-hand corner, the red area would be coming off of Elliott Road, just at about that Cactus Yard intersection. So if you can picture Elliott and Cactus Yards Lane, you'd be coming in, and this is what you would see. You would see restaurants on either side, right and the left. You'd be looking into the, kind of some multifamily off to the right. You would see two-story multifamily over first-floor retail, kind of that mixed-use corridor where you would have some open space, and really an attractive area for the people to kind of create that restaurant destination area, a restaurant district, if you will. And made a commitment to build a minimum amount of commercial, restaurant, retail area to create that area. And so that's part of the PAD and the development plan, those commitments to do that, as well as all the renderings. You can see some of the, what that area would look like. Again, if you look to the lower right-hand corner, this would look straight to the south, and what that area would look like to create that really cool area that people could walk to, drive to, and go visit, something different and unique than just a traditional industrial development, something that they would like to have in their neighborhood. Here's another perspective, a little bit further to the south, and what that would look like. Again, very attractive area, and working with the neighbors. Here's an example of the two-story residential over the mixed-use component that we're proposing of first floor. A lot of these buildings would be built with 15-foot plate for the first-floor retail residential area. Some of them will be true mixed-use, where there is retail restaurant on the first floor with residential on the next two stories. And then as market really demands on some of the other buildings, they'd still have that 15-foot plate first floor, so if there was more market for restaurants or retail, they could build into that area. If there wasn't market, they could use it for residential. And then if the market ever changed in 10 years, it could come back to that restaurant or retail as well. So the flexibility is designed into the project to allow that. One of the other concerns was truck traffic off of Elliott Road. If you remember, the earlier plan had a lot of the truck traffic going to Elliott, going to Power, and going to Warner. The neighbors really wanted to preserve that Elliott Road corridor as more of a residential feel as opposed to the commercial feel, and that's why that L-shaped buffer, if you will, is shaped the way it is, with the commercial and the multifamily, the residential mixed-use in that area. So you can see, and Veronica pointed this out, how the truck traffic, the yellow, is really designed only to go out to Power. There will be a traffic signal, if you can see that, at this location right now is where it's being proposed. Obviously, that will be reviewed during the site plan process. And then the truck traffic would go on out here. We've committed to the neighbors that there would be no truck traffic on this, and that we would work with the town to make sure that there's signage, so that no trucks go west on Warner Road as well, to kind of keep the trucks. Now, the natural truck traffic is going to flow south on Power, directly onto the freeway, and then go where it's supposed to be going. So we think that's a very reasonable request. As part of this project, there'll be a substantial amount of off-site improvements that would be completed with both Elliott, Power, and Warner Roads, which we think is desperately needed in this area, because it's not as developed as it should be, but this project will help facilitate that. Other improvements in traffic signals that we've talked about would be made at, you know, the Cactus Yards, the Power and Elliott, that mid-block that I showed you, and then Power and Warner traffic signals. Now let's talk about the physical buffering. As part of this design that we worked on with the neighbors, you can see the industrial was pulled back 870 feet away. This two-story multifamily is placed in this area, restricted light industrial, that's not part of this case here tonight, was put in this area, but this two-story multifamily, this three-story mixed-use area, this general commercial, this mixed-use area, and then this mixed-use area would go in here. This would create the visual buffer for the residents. They would look, and they'd look through this open space, but then they'd see this multifamily to physically block that view of the industrial back there. But the same concept was provided along Elliott Road, so as you're going down Elliott, you're not having any of the truck traffic going out to Elliott Road. But you would also have the first layer, about 300 feet, of retail along Elliott Road, that you would also then have the second layer of development with that mixed-use development at three stories, up to 45 feet, that would create that layer to block along Elliott Road, so you don't see this industrial complex. It would be wrapped around to block it both physically and visually. And that was the concept behind working with the neighbors on that. Let's skip through that. Here's some renderings of what that would look through Morrison Ranch, buffers from Elliott Road. You can see the general commercial that we've planned along this area is about 281 feet deep. This mixed-use area would be about an additional 345 feet deep, so you're going to be quite a far distance off of Elliott Road before you get to any of this industrial zone property with these heights. Again, here's some renderings of what that would look like. Here's some examples of that mixed-use large area and the buildings that would be planned in there. Again, that first floor with the two levels of residential above it, potentially residential on the first floor as well. Some other examples of that mixed-use area and what that would look like. So very attractive agreement that we've tried to put together to create really a puzzle of how this fits in. Now, why is this all important? To create this destination restaurant zone, restaurant district, if you will, we've committed to do, let me go back to the plan, so I can show you. We have committed to build 20,000 square feet of restaurant retail in this area, 15,000 of square feet of restaurant retail in this area, 12,000 square feet of restaurant retail in this area, for 47,000 square feet of restaurant boutique retail. That's a lot. That is a big commitment for a developer to try to make that work, because when you say 47,000, that's not a big box or a grocery store. That's small, individual restaurant retail spaces, and so it's tough to kind of fill that up with boutique shops. That's a lot of retail. When we went to staff, they recommended denial because they wanted more, and so we then offered to add an additional 15,000 square feet in this area here, to take it from 47,000 to 47, 15, 50, 57, 62,000 square feet, which we think is a stretch, is a lot, quite a bit of that boutique retail to go in that area. But we were willing to do that because we want to create this destination area, and we're committed to doing that. Staff, and I think this is really the only point that we disagree with staff on, is the interpretation of what this means. And so that's why we wanted to clarify it with the commission here this evening. On the condition, and I can't, I think it's, is it P, Veronica? Is it, have I got it right? P1? I think that's the correct one. But the LDC requires 20% of the floor area within the 11 acres to be non-residential use. Well, if you define floor area as the first floor area, that would take our commitment of 15,000 up to about 22,000 square feet of additional retail. So you'd have about 69,000 square feet of retail in that little area that we're talking about. That's restaurant boutique, retail shops, non-residential uses. That's a lot in that area. My understanding is staff reads this to say the 20% of the floor area would be the total floor area. So if you have a three-story residential structure, say 294 units, an average square foot of, say, 1,000 square feet, you're about 300,000 square feet of floor area. You'd have to have 20% of that, so that would be an additional, instead of an additional 20,000, that would be an additional, like, about 78,000 square feet of retail. We think that's oversaturation. That's way too much and wouldn't be able to do it. Our concern is if we have to live with it as total floor area as opposed to ground floor area, we think it would, but too much of a burden of retail in the area, too much supply, and it would either not be built and not create that buffer that we're trying to accomplish with the neighbors, or it would be built and be vacant. And that's even worse, is to have retail shops built and be vacant. I know that, because for those familiar with, my office is at Val Vista and Baseline, at Dana Park. It's a beautiful shopping center. But I'd say 15 to 20% of the retail space in that shopping center has been vacant in the 15 years that I've been there. We can look across the street to the same developer, Triple Five, which built where my office is, across the street over here with Gilbert Town Center. When you build too much retail and it just doesn't work, it remains vacant, and it struggles. And we see that as you drive across the street here to the west with Gilbert Town Center. So just designating it doesn't mean it will get built, but building it in an area where there's not enough to support it is even worse, because then it just becomes vacant, and that becomes even more of a problem. So we think we can commit to this requirement of 20% of the ground floor area. With that, I think we could go ahead and be supportive of the project, of the conditions as they're written. So we would hope that you would recommend approval of this project in our compromise with staff to have mixed use, with a clarification of condition P1 with inserting the word "ground." And that would give us a total of almost 70,000 square feet of boutique shop, retail, non-residential uses in that area. We think that's plenty for a half-mile retail area that's not even on an arterial arterial corner. It's a half-mile in, so it's mid-block. We think that's a ton, but we're willing to give it a good effort, because we think with this project and the destination that we're trying to create, it could survive, and we're hopeful that everybody in Morrison Ranch eats and shops and comes here quite frequently. So with that, and then the residential that we're proposing, we think we could make it work. So with that, I'm sorry I took so long. I'm kind of passionate about this project and working on it for about four months. I think this can work, and we really want to work with, continue to work with staff. This board will see the site plans and the design review of each of these parcels and how they will, so that this is not the last bite at the apple that the board has or that the staff has, but that will come back with the site plan applications and the DRB applications. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but would request your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Any questions for Mr. Lake at this time? No? All right. We'll go ahead. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you just clarify-
Can you just clarify? I'm looking at the colored site plan. There's an area called restricted light industrial, LIPAD. Can you define what that is? What's happening on that portion of the site that's restricted?
I'm trying to go back to that, and it's not clicking. Sorry. So, oh. You did that? Let's go back to... There we go. The restricted LI is not part of this application. It is part of the major, and what that is, is it's the LI that you proposed, and I know we're not supposed to talk about cases that are not before us, but quickly, what we've done is we've restricted height and uses and development standards in that area to look more like business park and have a restricted number of uses. So that feels a lot different. We've also oriented the docks so that they face east and not west. So it has a list of restrictions on that area.
Okay, so the restricted is part of the other GP zoning case, not this one?
It's part of the other case.
If I know that, I wouldn't have asked the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I actually have one question now that you're on this slide. It just reminded me of the circulation. So will, it appears that multifamily that's kind of mid-area there.
That one or this one?
No, to the left. That one there. It looks like circulation, you have traffic on that that will or could filter out to Warner Road. Am I incorrect there?
There is a possibility that that could filter out to that westernmost access on Warner Road that kind of divides our project here and the Warner, I think it's called Warner Commons, industrial project here. So yes, this project could access here, it could access here, or could access here, and we would nail that down during the site plan process.
Okay. And we're not at site plan at this point, but I would assume that that is going to be gated of some sort in order to stop the...
Yes, typically those are.
Okay. All right. That's the only question I had that came up, and as you were on this screen, that was the question I had at this time. So, all right, we'll go to, thank you very much, Mr. Lake. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I would like to agree with the developer on revised condition P1. I think based on my experience with retail that goes back a couple of decades, I think you're correct. You can't force to have retail, extensive retail when the market may not sustain it, and you will have vacant properties which will be hard to basically fill. So I wanted to agree with you on that position on revised P1. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lake. We're going to go ahead and go to community members comment, community comment. So I'm going to go ahead. I've only got a couple here, which is quite a contrast from the last time we had a meeting on this. So I'll call you up. You've got three minutes, and I've got Jennifer Wada. I've got you first on the stack here, so I will give you three minutes.
Chair Simon, Commission members, my name is Jennifer Wada, and I live in the Elliott Grove subdivision of Morrison Ranch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is quite a different situation than the last time I spoke to you about the ranch project. I've been a part of the small group of Morrison Ranch neighbors working with Mr. Lake and the developers over the last few months to get to a plan that makes this development bearable. I'm grateful to Mr. Lake, Mr. Brimhall, and the team from Comena for their willingness to listen and incorporate changes, not just to create a plan that passes the town process, but to offer something that actually includes some benefits to the neighborhood, and I think we're almost there. At the April Planning Commission meeting when the ranch was discussed, I heard a number of concerned comments by commission members about the multifamily portion of the plan, and I'd like to offer some feedback from my neighbors that I've witnessed. When we shared the plans with the Morrison Ranch Neighborhood Facebook groups, which in just our main group alone, there's more than 4,500 members, there were less than 100 comments, and of those comments, the overwhelming majority were either neutral or in many cases positive. A lot of people said things like, "Looks great" or "Much better." There were a number of positive comments about the increase in commercial and the inclusion of restaurants and other retail places for us to go. They were also thankful for the dialogue that had taken place between the developers and some of us residents. Of the handful of negative comments I read, the majority were about the industrial portion. People were worried about the amount of semi-trucks, the noise, the truck traffic potentially going west on Warner, and it was the same at the neighborhood meeting last week. And while, yes, a few residents wanted to be reassured that the multifamily would be high-end and draw quality residents, the majority of concerns were still about the industrial impact. So in our experience, it's the industrial more than the multifamily that has been the bigger issue with some of the residents. Keeping a significant non-industrial transition along Elliott Road allows us to maintain separation between the industrial growth on Power and our community and prevents truck traffic on Elliott. It also gives us some actual benefits with the commercial and retail areas. Yes, people in Gilbert are frustrated with the amount of multifamily developments, but the one thing our neighborhood hates more than apartments is industrial. That's what always has been the center of the concerns for this project, the intensity of the industrial and its uses, and the amount of resulting semi-trucks. So it is only now that there is a lot less industrial in the plan and some retail benefits that you're not seeing the uproar that you experienced last fall. Over the last few months, we've had several meetings with Mr. Lake, Mr. Brimhall, and the Comena team. They made some immediate initial changes and have continued to alter the plan based on ongoing feedback. A number of concerns that were presented as recently as the neighborhood meeting last week have been incorporated into the current plan. As a result, we've seen the number of residents complaining come down significantly along with the reduction in the industrial and the increase in the commercial retail. This process with the neighborhood is not complete yet. There are some loose ends that need to be tied up in order for there to be support for this plan at the town council hearing. But personally, if the current plan is finalized, approved, and built, it's more than I expected and has turned what was a nightmare last fall into something that we might actually get to enjoy. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next up, I've got Ryan Handelsman.
Thank you, everybody. I want to echo pretty much Jennifer's sentiment here and yours as well that six months ago, I probably would have came with a pitchfork and a PowerPoint presentation and 150 reasons why I oppose the project. As with another hundreds or thousands of people today, I took a couple of notes while sitting in the back of the room as to try to articulate best what I wanted to say today, and I think Jennifer summed it up very nicely, and I think the word is bearable or palatable. You know, the amount of industrial that we've seen in the original proposal was absurd, and I think we echoed comment over comment over a comment that we originally felt went unheard and that we want a place that we can go and be able to support and patron, whether it be retail or restaurant or what have you. And so I don't think if you were to poll any one Morrison Ranch neighbor, you'd get any one person that strongly opposes or strongly supports in one direction or the other. I think Jennifer's word was perfect. It's bearable now. I don't think anybody in Morrison Ranch or the surrounding neighborhoods understands why we need 71% industrial or millions upon millions of square feet, and that's a question that will remain unanswered. But like I said, I think the project as it stands now is bearable. If the plan that's presented today were to get voted on and approved, I agree with Jennifer in that I look forward to being able to find a place that I can support and provide, you know, to patron and small business and support the small businesses there. I think it also should go on record and also compliment and say thank you to the council members that might not be here physically tonight but are watching, but this whole entire new plan wouldn't be here today without the likes of Kathy Tilke and now Congressman Torgensen in helping shepherd that communication with Shawn Lake and Stacy Brimhall. So in a nutshell, I know I just probably said everything that Jennifer just said on repeat. This is a much more palatable plan in our opinion, and I believe that if along the way we are able to maintain and this open dialogue with the developer and communication with you and the town and that certain stipulations are put into play to protect how the entire plan in its whole is developed and what the use cases are for the industrial, just to making sure that this is a place that is safe for us and traffic is addressed and all the concerns are addressed, I think this would be, like I said, bearable and often supported by the majority of the neighborhood. But that's on my behalf. Obviously, I'm not everybody in the community, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm not a very good public speaker, but just wanted to say thank you to the Morrison Ranch neighborhood for working with us. Comena and I, Langley, we've been partners for a long time. Little over a year and a half ago, we bought a really big farm in the San Tan Valley area. I'm fifth generation Arizonan, love farming, and so I was spending most of my time on that, on a tractor, and then Comena called and said, "Hey, get off your tractor and come help." And came and saw what was going on and thought, "Oh, no, I want to go back to my tractor." And, but that being said, in meeting with the neighbors, they were very professional, very cordial, very kind, and willing to listen to us, willing to listen to me, and willing to work with me, and we made commitments early on, both me to them that I'd keep my word and them to me that they'd keep theirs. And so I'd just like to thank all those that have worked so diligently on this in the Morrison Ranch neighborhood and the Morrison Ranch residences. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, Mr. Lake, this is where I would typically ask you if you want to come up and address any of those concerns. However, it seems as though you've repressed those, so, or done a very good job of addressing them. So with that, I will bring it up to the dais. Is there any conversation questions for staff or the applicant on this before I close the public hearing? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Can we get that modified stipulation back on the board, please, Ashley?
There we go. So is that clearly defined in the LDC, the definition of that? Because projects I've done in surrounding communities, they kind of looked at it the same way as Mr. Lake has been looking at it, where for a multi-use project, it's always been a percentage of the ground floor area and not total area of the project. I'm leaning towards Mr. Lake in his reasoning for it, but I know we can't override how the LDC is written. So can you give us a little bit of history on the actual definition, how it's interpreted in the LDC?
Chairman, Commissioner. In speaking with Noamont and Samantha Navatney that wrote that section of the code, it was not for ground floor because mixed use doesn't have to be in one building. It can be on site, so that's why it was 20% of the total floor area, not the ground floor area.
Okay, so if Mr. Lake is asking for a deviation, are we able to grant a deviation for 20% of ground? Because I do agree with Commissioner Johnson where if we have to do 20% of total area, that's going to create a lot of commercial space that potentially will never get occupied, and then we just have a bunch of empty buildings and undeveloped land, and that should be a concern for everybody.
Chairman, Commissioner, there is a PAD, so things outside of the land development code can be requested. However, I also want to clarify, we're not saying it has to be retail or has to be commercial. What we're saying is 20% non-residential.
Commissioner Davis? Did you have something?
Well, I was just going to clarify, that could mean fitness areas, amenities for the multifamily.
That would have to be a lot of area, though. I mean, because...
Right, right. I agree with that. I was just curious if that falls into it.
Chairman, Commissioner, that would not include those areas unless they are open to the public.
Out of curiosity, what's the typical square footage of a fries marketplace?
75,000.
75,000? So we're talking a space larger than that in addition to what you're already offering?
On the 11 acres, in addition to...
That's a lot of space.
Yeah. I guess I'm, my impression is that through the PAD process, you can modify that development standard. And so I think the PAD does give you that flexibility.
Go ahead. Did you have something else? Yeah, I would agree with that. That's what PAD is for, creating your own zoning guidelines or land development code for these type of parcels. So, yeah, I would agree with that, and if we're able to do that deviation and just base it off ground floor area, I really think that would benefit everybody, including the town.
If we were to do it off of ground floor area of that 11.7 acres, whatever it is, what potentially is the total of the ground floor area? Because then the boat's a question, what's the right percentage that we're looking at? Is 20% the right percentage? That, to me, of ground floor area almost seems a little light if we're looking for a mixed use.
Well, if Mr. Lake is interpreting as 20%, that's what's written in the LDC. Let's just stick with the percentage and not goof around with those. Let's just narrow it down to what are we taking 20% of? Percentage of? Are we taking 20% of gross building area or 20% of the ground floor area? And to me, it doesn't sound like he's disputing that. He just wants clarification that he can use ground floor area. He's not, otherwise, if we do goof around the percentages, then it's like we figure out what the gross area is and can find out the equivalent of percentage, so it might be, you know, 2% or 3% to get closer to that square-foot itch area. But you're in agreement of the 20%. You just want to clarify that it's based off ground floor area.
And based upon ground floor area and our estimate of what those buildings would be, and again, we haven't site planned it yet, our estimate would be that it would add an additional 22,800 square feet of non-residential uses in that area in addition to the 47,000 that are on the other three sides, which we think is a ton at that area at a half-mile location.
Mr. Chairman... May I? The reason staff was wanting to comply or wanting the LDC minimum requirement, 20% of the ground, of the floor area for the entire square footage, is what we're trying to prevent is one single building being the mixed use, you know, with the ground floor non-residential use, and then all other buildings within that area being straight multifamily. So we're looking for the mix in more than just one building.
Are we able to stipulate it that way, that they can't put it all into one building?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, it is not currently stipped that way.
Okay, but we could stipulate it up here if everyone was in agreement.
If that is how you want to amend the condition, that is within your purview.
Chairman, and we could add to this that must be minimum LDC requirements, at least 20% of the ground floor area within the 11.7, and then at the end, through additional, or through multiple buildings, or something to the effect that say we have to do it through multiple buildings.
Could you do it of each building?
We've got about nine buildings there, and to achieve the 22, we're going to be three to four buildings in that nine buildings, the way we've kind of laid it out right now. Again, we're going to go through the site plan process to do that.
So I think when we get to the site plan, we can throw the stip on the site plan if we agree to this. Now, can we do this site, when they bring the site plan back, or do we need to do the stipulation on here?
Mr. Chairman, the stipulation would need to be here. This is the opportunity for us to get that assurance, that firmness with it. You know, with the site plan, that's, there isn't an ordinance that is associated with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would tend to agree with staff. I would support them on that to make sure that they don't put it all into one building, that it does get distributed out and becomes a boutique kind of area with smaller shops and restaurants. and restaurants for the residents to visit.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Davis?
I just want to add, I agree with that. I think three to four buildings is fair, but I also, because what I'm looking at is the fact that there's a lot of commercial in this area that's approved. You've got it in Mesa with Gallery Park and Cannon Beach coming, you've got the Frye Center across the street. I think it's not reasonable to expect this development to carry that much commercial and have it be viable. So I guess, you know, having said that, I think that this is a unique condition, that there's so much commercial in the area that it justifies that reduction in how much commercial that they need to have here. But I do agree with staff, it shouldn't all be limited to one building. I think that needs to be spread out. I could see three or four, I mean, those front buildings, but I don't know how viable it's going to be in those back buildings.
Yeah. Fair enough. What's that?
Should we close and bring it up?
Yeah, well, and I mean, I have a couple of additional questions that I, I would like addressed. I mean, and this is more probably for you, Mr. Lake, or for the applicant, with regards to, and I had the opportunity to speak with you earlier today, so this is kind of a follow-up to our conversation earlier, and just to bring it to light. With regards to the L shape, looking at this development, if I were looking at this development with fresh eyes and, and the way that it lays out, and with the, the general commercial already along Elliott Road, and coming in and saying, okay, we want to put residential back here, it seems like a very odd thing. You did a good job earlier today of explaining to me why it is that you're looking for that, and I don't know, maybe for other members of the commission, or members of the community, or just even to have it on record, maybe you could address what you did with me with regards to why you're looking to add that additional space.
The, the L shape and why we did that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, really, the L shape, the, the, the part along the west side was to create that visual and physical buffer and distance buffer from the industrial. And that's why you see the mixed use restrict, or the restricted LI, and then you transition into that two-story residential, and then you transition into that mixed use small area. And that creates not only the green space, but buildings along that west side that creates that not only distance, but the physical height separation. Then we took that and we wrapped it around along Elliott and did the exact same thing to push the industrial buildings back south into the site, and then create a layer of commercial along Elliott, because we want to preserve that commercial along Elliott as you go down, which is about 300 feet wide. And then the second tier in, we created with, with staff, we compromised with staff to create that mixed use area on that second tier. And what that does is create that first level of retail along Elliott, and then the second tier or second level of, of that mixed use residential in that area that goes up 45 feet tall, and that screens the industrial in the back, to kind of create that protected visual area along Elliott and Cactus Yards and the baseball field, so that you're not seeing stark industrial buildings as you go up and down Elliott and through this neighborhood area. We're trying to protect that. Is that the point that I was, that you wanted?
Yeah, yes, and the additional residential, I think, is, is the other...
And, and the additional residential, the, one of, obviously, the big issue was the light industrial and the percentage. And so reducing that was a big deal for the neighbors and was, was a non-negotiable, quite frankly, to take, and so that's why we brought the percentage down to where it's at today. But the other big point was they wanted this resort, or this restaurant district, this cool destination spot to go. And really, the only way you can do that is to create demand. So you can provide the supply, but in economics, we learned you got to have demand. And if you go to Cooley Station, what makes Cooley Station is the density around it. You look at Towntown Gilbert, and what makes downtown Gilbert work is the density around it. And so we needed to provide or add some density in this area so that you have people willing to go eat and shop at this specialty area. And that's why that residential was so critical to this plan, so that we could have those warm bodies walking to this restaurant district to eat there, to shop there. And if you take that away, you take away a critical component to make that cool destination spot happen. And, and working with the neighbors, they're like, yeah, we want this, but we're struggling with the, the multifamily, but we really want this. And, and that's where it was the give and take in working with this neighborhood group to say, okay, we're getting a lot of what we want, and we like your plan, and, and to have two people show up here tonight to, and I'm not going to say support, the word is, it was palatable, but they're not opposed to the project as it is presented. And so we're really trying to do something unique and cool here. We need the residential component to make the unique, cool place build. We need that residential component to screen visually, because these multifamily, that's going to be 45 feet tall, and that 45 feet tall can screen larger buildings in the back. And so you're not going to see it. So there's a lot of, of things that went into this puzzle to make this work. And so we would hope you wouldn't just strip out. Our worst-case scenario is, is that, you know, we have to do 100,000 square feet of retail on that, that mixed use large, and it just never gets built. And so in that, then we don't have the bodies to eat at the restaurants, we don't have the visual screening to, to protect the, the view corridor along Elliott, and we don't have any, any buffer, you just have a vacant lot that sits there. And that, to me, is, or worst case, it gets built and it's vacant, and, and you got to, you got a situation across the street. So that's what we don't want to happen. So we think the package all fits together with the revised condition that you've discussed on, on the multiple buildings. We could live with that and would request your support of that. Sorry to ramble.
No, that's good. And the, the only last question that I have, and I'll throw it out to you, is this open space, by admission, it's quite large, is, is that, who's maintaining that piece of property?
That would be this, so, this, it would be a consolidation of this property that would...
Be an association that basically takes care of it?
An association.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Davis?
I just need to clarify one more thing with staff. So that industrial portion is going back to, is going, still going through council, but that did not include a site plan. That was just zoning. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, that's correct. It was just a development plan.
So if there are concerns, and I'll get into this later, but with the cross-dock facility in that location, we can address that with the site plan in the future. This is just about the zoning and not the site plan we're seeing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question to that, Veronica. With regards to, because it is a major general plan amendment, the commission already approved it, and that's why it doesn't need to come back to us for the major general plan amendment for that industrial, and it, and the council has tabled it, so they're waiting to hear back on this. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. If at the council hearing, the council decides it needs to rem, or it wants to remand back the major general plan amendment, they can. But procedurally, this will move forward to town council on June 20th.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Johnson?
This is not for staff. Mr. Chairman, follow-up on your point and, and the applicant's point. This afternoon, I drove on Elliott from Higley all the way down to Power. I could see it. I could see the logic and the pieces coming together. I could imagine the height and the mixed use and the cool restaurant area. So I'm, I'm in support of the logic of how these pieces fall together, because I could see it when I drove down Elliott, how that would, how we do and how we buffer the industrial areas. And thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant? All right, not hearing any, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back up to the dais for discussion and/or emotion. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Just the only discussion is more of a point that many times up here, we deal with a lot of heated debates, and many of those times, it's because of a misunderstanding about the process. And I think this is a very good showcase of how the process can and does work. It's not always perfect, it's not always pretty, but to be able to take individuals that are strongly opposed going up and being able to find common ground, I think, is a testament to not only the staff, but the individuals throughout the town of Gilbert. And I also would like to say that even when it was as heated as it could be, it was always very civil, and there's not a lot of communities that can say that. So I just wanted to make that point, that I think this project has come a long way, and I'm impressed.
Thank you. Well said. Yeah, Commissioner Davis?
I'll give my thoughts on this. I agree with Vice Chairman Munt. That was, this has certainly been a difficult one. My, I think it was my second meeting on this commission, when we had that very long night, and I was not one of the people that supported it moving forward, and my issue was the buffering between the residential and the industrial, and I didn't think that that was being provided in the plan that we had in front of us. I was hoping council would address that and take a look at those things, and they've done that, and it's back here before us with that, you know, way better buffer. And I do appreciate all that's happened between the neighbors and the property owners and developers to get it to this point. My concern back in October was the buffering to residential. Now we're introducing multifamily, still residential. My concerns are related to the buffering also for that multifamily component. So I think on the west side of the property where that's coming, you've got the ends of those buildings, and you've got that parking area, you've got, I realize we're not going to have, this is not the final site plan, but it gives me some comfort that we've got some buffering to the multifamily. I don't want to create a situation where we have a multifamily development that's not very livable, that's not, you know, you're listening to the beeping of people, of the vehicles backing up, and you're seeing a bunch of storage areas out your third-floor window into those areas, even if it is off to the side. It's not creating a great environment. So those are the things that I'll be looking for when the site plans come back. I absolutely don't support those mixed use, the mixed use large along Elliott, having that cross dock right there. I'd much rather see buildings that are more like what's out along Power Road, maybe with the, the storage areas in the rear, away, you know, focused away from there. So that, those will be the things that I'd be looking for as far as site plan when it comes in in the future. But I do really appreciate that. It is super unusual that we have people requesting for there to be multifamily coming in there. I like the idea of the mixed use. I think that's, could really create something cool. The elevations are beautiful, the renderings. I think it could be a really nice contribution. But again, when you're designing those site plans, I really think you have to pay close attention to those buffers and how you design that industrial, and what buildings end up right next to those industrial areas because, or what buildings next to the residential, because I just don't think it's good to put a cross-dock facility that close to residential, whether it's multifamily or a single family. So I think we have to think about those people that live in our town as well, and so that's what I'll be looking for. I guess that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion? Do you want to make a motion? You have comments?
I was going to make a motion.
All right. Let me throw my comments out, quick?
I still have some.
All right.
I'll turn my red off.
Thank you. So I, I would like to echo what's been set up here. Like Commissioner Davis, was one of the oppositions to the original plan, and not because I don't think that the light industrial is needed, because I think it's very much needed in the community, but I was concerned with some of the buffering and with all of the commentary from the neighbors, I thought that we needed to at least take a look. I am, I am pleased where it's at. I do have some concerns. I will look to the site plan. Similar to Commissioner Davis, I'm very concerned with regards to the cross dock that buffers up against that mixed use. I think that it's really important, especially if I think, I think that I saw in the staff report that at the community meeting, the, the price of $200 to $250 a square foot was thrown out for these apartments, 800-square-foot apartment, that's $1,600. That's more than my mortgage. That's a lot for a one-bedroom apartment or a loft apartment. And, and if we're going to be building luxury apartment complexes in the town of Gilbert, or high-end, or however you want to state it, we need to make sure that we're maintaining the quality of living. And I don't think backed up against the cross dock, whether it's a single-family home or an apartment complex, is quality of living in that situation. So I'll be looking to that, just to see how that comes out and how that, that final plan I would definitely be in favor of a stipulation of 20% of the ground floor area on that 11.7 acres. I think that that's reasonable. I have some pretty heavy concerns with all of the general commercial that we've got in this area, and whether or not retail will be able to sustain it, not just on this pad that's being proposed, but the other pads that are already there and under development in some form or fashion. So I'd hate to see empty and vacant rather than viable. And so I, I would be in favor of that stipulation. I would have loved to seen some smaller flex industrial. I think that we're missing some of that product here in the town of Gilbert. However, I know that that was not proposed here. It would have just been nice to see some of that, and I think that that might have been missed or a missed opportunity on this lot. That being said, I'm very much in favor with where this project is now. Like I said, I was opposed to it originally, just because I thought there needed to be some work, and I am very pleased with where it's come. And provided it comes to fruition, I'll enjoy visiting the area. So with that, unless there's any other comment, Commissioner Anderson?
Just to jump onto that condition for the 20%, just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, like you stated, it's 20% of the ground floor area, but we also want to make sure that we condition that it gets spread out over numerous buildings, not the one. So question for staff, does that condition go to the, I'm assuming that condition gets attached to the staff conditions now of the zoning case and not the general plan, so we'll just throw it on general plan as is, and then when we get the zoning, that's when we add that condition?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Unless there's any other comment or discussion that needs to be had, I will entertain a motion first on the general plan, GP 23-12, residents at the ranch.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 15, GP 23-12, residents at the ranch.
I have a motion to approve by the vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Go ahead and cast your vote. And the motion carries 5-1. All right. And do I have a motion, a motion to approve item 16Z 23-04, residents at the ranch? Or a motion, excuse me, not...
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 16Z 23-04, residents at the ranch, with the stipulation that in, stipulation P, we insert that the floor is ground floor area, and also an additional stipulation at the end that it's multiple buildings.
All right. I have a motion to approve by the vice chair, including stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Please cast your vote. And that motion also carries 5-1. All right.
Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask you to state who voted in the one, just for the minute taker?
Yeah, so the motion carried 5-1 with Commissioner Fay and the dissent on both those two motions. Okay. Thank you very much for coming out. We really appreciate it. Obviously, community involvement is extremely important, so. Moving on to administrative items. Administrative items are for commission discussion and action. At this, it is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on administrative items should complete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to address the commission. The commission may or may not accept public comment, and I don't see any public comments on any administrative items. No? So we'll move on. The planning commission minutes were in your packet. Consider approval of minutes for study session. Do I have a motion to approve for April 5th?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to approve the meeting minutes for April 5th. 5th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Davis. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Chairman, I think, okay, it came up. I, I thought there was a missed vote, I was going to say.
Oh, okay. We do not have executive session tonight. We'll move on to a report from the chairman and members of the commission. I have nothing to report. Anybody have anything? No? All right, we'll jump. And then Ava, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank staff for all their presentations tonight, and especially Planner Sal DeSanto. I believe it was his first time presenting.
Awesome, thank you. And Sal will expect many, many more before you decide to leave to go someplace else. We'll get you all trained up, so. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Thank you all very much, and we will see you sometime in June, June 7th.
I think I owe you.
Oh, that's right, we have a Board of Adjustments meeting on May 24th, 5:00 PM.